I'd like to call our committee the whole meeting for April 4th, 2018, to order. At this time, for our moment of silence, maybe many of you have seen the recognition or the memorial of 50 years ago that Dr. Martin Luther King was killed. And there's a few points, I'm not going to read this whole "I have a dream" speech, which is very moving and very eloquent, but a few key points that I'd like to share that I think are timeless. You know, now is the time to make justice a reality for all of God's children. We must come to realize that our freedom is inextricably bound to the freedom of all people. I have a dream that one day, this nation will live out the true meaning of its creed. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal. I have a dream that the sons of former slaves and the sons of former slave owners will be able to sit down together at the table of brotherhood. I have a dream that, in his case, my four little children will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. I have a dream that one day, my little black boys and the little black girls will be able to join hands with the little white boys and little white girls as sisters and brothers. With that thought that is timeless, please, let's have a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Alderman McGinnis, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose, Condon.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Kuhl.
Here.
Tompkins.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Nine present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, and I, Alderman Ambrose called in, was on his way back, so he may get here yet. At this point, again, I want to wish you a good evening, and as we normally do, I want to begin this city council meeting, and I would like to welcome all and those in attendance and those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are happy that you're here participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance, and those watching at home, I want to thank you all for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handheld devices, as they can interfere with the audio system and be disruptive here in the council chambers. If you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on a discussion agenda, you are encouraged to do so during the standing committee. You will also have an opportunity to address the council under public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the city council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself or the committee chair, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. You will be asked to limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So, thank you again for being here. Is there a city administrator update this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. We have two public hearings this evening, and one under community development. Alderman Gripp, as chair of that area of community development, will lead that discussion.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you stated, we have two public hearings this evening for community development. I opened the first public hearing on the proposed conveyance of vacated public right-of-way, that being part of East 10th Street lying north of the sidewalk at 1002 Bridge Avenue. Juan Goita, the petitioner. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's been a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. This public hearing is closed. Public hearing number two is on the proposed conveyance of the following property, The South 102.02 Feet of Lot 2 Interstate 80 Airport Industrial Park, Sixth Edition, City of Davenport, County of Scott, State of Iowa, to petitioner Dear &amp; Company. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close this public hearing. There is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. This public hearing is closed. That concludes community development, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, and again, for those in watching and those watching on TV, the public hearing opens it up, lets everybody know we're going to be discussing this, this item will come up again in our regular agenda, and that happens going forward. We won't have public hearings every week on this subject, but we'll be discussing it as part of our council agenda for that evening. We have two proclamations for tonight's meeting. Our first is recognizing Fair Housing Month, and Alderman Rossen is going to lead that proclamation.
Thank you. Proclamation. Whereas April 2018 marks the 50th anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act in 1968, and as such, we should take stock not only of how far we have come in the last 50 years, but more importantly, what remains uncompleted in achieving the goal of complete freedom of housing choice for all persons in our country. And whereas, the effects of past housing discrimination linger in cities around the United States and continue to create barriers, and whereas it is critical for leaders at all levels and community members to ensure barriers to safe and affordable housing do not exist, and whereas it is the American dream to build a better life in the home of each person's choice regardless of race, color, religion, creed, sex, national origin or ancestry, marital status, age, mental or physical disability, political affiliation, gender identity, familial status, or sexual orientation. Let us support all who struggle and strive to achieve this dream. Now therefore, we Mayor Frank Klipsch and the Davenport City Council do hereby proclaim the month of April 28th as Fair Housing Month 2018 in the City of Davenport and call on all residents to continue in their support of this effort and to recognize the importance of homeownership and equal housing within our community dated this fourth day of April 2018, and I move the proclamation.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Thank you. If our civil rights director, Latrice Lacy, will come up to accept the proclamation.
And we want to talk a little bit about our conference coming up, too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, please do. Yeah, thank you. Take a picture.
Sure. That's why I had.
Let's get our little thing here. Yeah.
Thank you. Good. Thank you to the mayor and council. So, as you know, every year we do the Fair Housing Month proclamation to celebrate the anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, but it's also the anniversary of the death of Martin Luther King, as the mayor did an introduction to. This is the 50th anniversary of his death, so I figured it was pertinent that I say something about Dr. King. We're celebrating the 50th anniversary almost to the minute. Died at 6:01 PM, April 4th, 1968, at the Lorraine Motel in Memphis, Tennessee. So, he was down there striking with the sanitation workers. So, it's been with great disappointment that we've kind of watched over the last few years, history repeating itself, kind of fighting the same civil rights struggles, defending the rights that Dr. King and others who fought alongside him fought and died for us to have. So, I just want to read a very quick excerpt from his speech. So, on my door, I have a sign that says, "Do what's right, not what is easy." That sign reminds me of a quote that he gave the day before he died. So, he said, "That's the question before you tonight. Not if I stop to help the sanitation workers, what will happen to my job? Not if I stop to help the sanitation workers, what will happen to all of the hours that I usually spend in my office every day and every week as a pastor? The question is not if I stop to help this man in need, what will happen to me? The question is if I do not stop to help the sanitation workers, what will happen to them? That's the question." Let us rise up tonight with greater readiness. Let us stand with a greater determination, and let us move in these powerful days, these days of challenge to make America what it ought to be. We have an opportunity to make America a better nation. So, I challenge us all here tonight to continue to show our commitment to equal rights, fair treatment, and humanity, show we will continue to uplift and uphold the life and legacy of Dr. King, and ensure that his death was not in vain. So, thank you on behalf of the commission for the proclamation.
Do you want to mention about our conference, too?
Yes. So, we are having a commemoration conference for the Fair Housing Act. It's going to be April 27th at the River Center. You can register on our website, City of Davenport, on the civil rights website. So, what we're going to talk about at the conference, it says Fair Housing Conference, but it's going to be all of the various things that are relating to housing. So, things relating to health, mental health, neighborhood trauma, economic development, the Credit Reinvestment Act. So, all of these things that are tangentially related to housing that we don't usually think of as being related to housing, so we're going to have conversations about those. We're also bringing in the author, Richard Rothstein, who wrote The Color of Law. So, his book goes over how the federal, state, and local governments kind of worked in lockstep to segregate our communities and the effect of those, of the segregation that these actions created, what we have today. So, where we see kind of segregated, racially segregated areas, but also socioeconomically segregated areas, and how those policies created those neighborhoods that we see today, and it contributed to a lot of the income and wealth inequality that we are currently battling today. So, I encourage everybody to register and come on out. We're also going to have a live band. They're going to be playing jazz music, so if you can't make it to the conference, which is between 8:00 and 4:00, please come out and enjoy the band. It's from 4:30 to 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. And our second proclamation this evening is going to be read by Alderman McGinnis about the National Community Development Week. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. And before I start, I'd just like to say, I was very pleased and other Aldermen and other folks today were on the CDBG tour, the tour of affordable housing around the city. The staff did a fantastic job of touring us very enthusiastically about what was going on, and so it was exciting to see what was happening in the city right now, all across the city, in terms of what the city's effort for affordable housing. So, now I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas, the week of April 2nd through 6th, 2018, has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program, and the Home Investment Partnerships, Home program, and whereas, the CDBG program provides annual funding and flexibility to local communities to provide decent, safe, and affordable housing, a suitable living environment and economic opportunities to low and moderate income people, and whereas, the Home Investment Partnerships, Home program, provides funding to local communities to create decent, safe, affordable housing opportunities for low and moderate income persons, and whereas, the City of Davenport recognizes that the CDBG and home-funded programs and projects are successful because of the partnerships and collaboration with residents, businesses, and community organizations, and whereas, for the year ending June 30th, 2017, nonprofit organizations were granted CDBG funds to provide services to low and moderate income residents, including youth enrichment and childcare programs, legal adequacy for survivors of domestic violence, shelter for the homeless, and transitional housing for individuals and families moving out of homelessness, and whereas, CDBG funds are used to provide loans for new and expanding businesses in Davenport that provide jobs and financial opportunity for Davenport residents, and whereas, neighborhood revitalization is a central activity of CDBG and home through housing rehabilitation, removal of blight, down payment assistance for first-time homebuyers, accessibility programs, and infrastructure improvements in support of affordable housing, and whereas, CDBG and home dollars are leveraged to provide affordable housing for working families in the form of down payment assistance for first-time homebuyers, and the production of new and renovated units for both owners and renters, and now therefore, we Mayor Frank Klipsch and the Davenport City Council do hereby proclaim the week of April 2nd through April 6th, 2018, as National Community Development Week in the City of Davenport to support these valuable programs that have made tremendous contributions to the vitality of the housing stock, public services, and economic vitality of our community. The City of Davenport urges Congress and the administration to recognize the outstanding work being done locally and nationally by the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnerships Program by supporting increased funding for both in fiscal year 2019, dated this fourth day of April 2018. I move the proclamation.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Thank you. I think we're going to have Bruce Berger, our Director of Community Planning and Economic Development, to accept the proclamation.
Just thank you again for, and thank you to several of the Aldermen. I think we had five, the max allowed, on our little tour today, so appreciate you mentioning that. A lot of things have been mentioned in this, so I won't go over that again. You can see how flexible the CDBG and home tools are for us as a community, so it means a great deal. It's important, Representative Lobzak was there today, and a representative from Senator Grassley's office. So, it's important for them, too, to see how it impacts Davenport and how many good things we can do with those federal funds to try to keep that pipeline flowing. So, thanks a lot.
Thank you. We're going to move on now to our petitions and communication from our council and members and myself. I'm going to turn it over to our community engagement chair, Alderman Dickman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Wanted to make sure everyone knows that the spring and summer catalog for our Parks and Rec Department is now available. One of my favorite things, there's going to be a pirate theme at Vander Veer, so definitely go check that out. There's something for all ages and a bunch of different classes that you can consider signing up for.
I think it's Kids Pass.
Oh, and, I was just subtly reminded, Kids Pass is a phenomenal deal. Make sure to check it out if you have a child in the home or if you know a kid that you want to keep busy all summer. You can get into Putnam, Figgy, the pools, a whole bunch of stuff, and it's only $50. So, it is golfing, getting a lot of help from council tonight, but really, the Kids Pass is a fantastic thing, so make sure that you check that out and check out the catalog and enjoy our amazing recreational amenities here in Davenport. Oh, and then, on a personal note, I have my award meeting next Thursday. It will be at Truman Elementary, and we will be discussing solar panels. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dickman. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just two things, please. Thank you to Public Works, Ms. Gleason and Mr. Schott for working some infrastructure things and solving some problems for us, so I appreciate that. And then, thank you to the mayor and the council for allowing me. I attended the Regional Disaster Preparedness Conference today. Tons of people from around the region getting together and discussing issues that are concerning from active shooter to major disasters, and it was just wonderful. Two of the speakers, I'll mention specifically, Tim Ryan, who talked about the opioid pandemic and all the issues that are going on, and then they had a panel discussion about all the particulars with medic, and we had doctors from Genesis and coroners and the police and law enforcement and all the different particulars that touched that and how important this issue is and how important that the Quad Cities recognizes this, that it's an epidemic in the country and we're not alone, and how everybody's coming together to try and work this. So, Tim Ryan, the speaker, was outstanding. And then, the other wonderful speaker that drew attention to everybody was the principal for Columbine High School during the massive tragedy that happened in April of 1999, and how he spoke about the issues and everything that he had to deal with concerning that thing and how it's led to some of the changes and how we react to some of those things. So, it was just wonderful, and I appreciate the time, and I thank the county and the city for working together to host that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson, and also, thank you for attending for us today. It was good to have representation. That was one thing that I have been involved in as well, but it's great to have you there to help me in the days that there's multiple things to do that day. I'm going to next go to Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Not this Saturday, but next Saturday, April 14th, 10:00 AM, will be the April 3rd Ward Meeting. It will be at Cedar Memorial Christian Church, so that's Saturday, April 14th, at 10:00 AM. Our special guest will be Sarah Ott from our community CPED department, and we'll be talking about recognized neighborhoods and how to become one. So, I hope anybody from the 3rd Ward, or anybody interested in hearing about this program, will join us then. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't want to belabor the point, because we've talked about the CDBG and the tour that happened today, but I want to give a special kudos to Heather Johnson and the work that she did. She is extremely passionate about CDBG and the home program. She helps to execute them. The tour today was awesome, but you could just see her passion for it and her knowledge of how to execute these programs effectively, and that's what we want to see out of our staff. So, awesome job to her.
Alderman Kuhl. Thank you, Alderman. Gripp, first of all. Alderman Kuhl.
Yeah, just a little follow-up on that. Representative Lobzak was mentioning to Heather some things while we were on the bus, and he made the comment, he said, "You know, you put me to sleep." Heather's first thought was, "Oh, my goodness, what did I do wrong?" But what he was trying to say is that she was so full of details and so knowledgeable about what's going on here in the city that it was just very impressive to him. So, I thought that was a very interesting take, and we also talked a little bit during the trip about an overlay, a map of what's happened with investment from the city, the state, and the federal government, and as those investments are made, seeing capitalism kick in and seeing private contractors moving into those areas and taking over where the city has gotten it started, and then private industry comes in afterwards. It was really an impressive trip today.
Thank you, Alderman Kuhl. Just to follow up with, Heather does great work. I know if you all remember, last week, we approved all the CDBG members, some reappointments and some new appointments, so it's perfect timing. They're all on board and actively engaged now. So, thank you all, the Aldermen who attended today. I just wanted to note one final thing, and that is the big table activity that's going on. The chamber is one of those trying to help facilitate that. The goal is 500 tables of 10 each. A number of us are hosting tables, and next week, we'll hear a little bit more about it. It's April 20th and 21st. It's an hour and a half time, or an hour possibly, maybe only an hour or an hour and a half, getting together with individuals from out the community. You can sign up online, so we'll tell you even more about that next week. So, thank you all. The next, we're going to move on to action items for discussion. Again, as a reminder, this section now, we go through everything on this agenda, read through every item, get potential feedback from some of you, from Alderman, and if, in fact, those questions have been answered, then we move that on to the consent agenda for next week. So, we'll talk more about that, but I'll turn it over to Alderman Gripp, who will lead this discussion, and Alderman Kuhl will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have 12 items up for discussion on community development this week. I'll start with item number one, which is a second consideration, ordinance for case number REZ 18-01 being the request of Tom Swanwick, DBA Forest View LLC, for a rezoning on 1.19 acres of property known as Lot 3 of Ride High Second Edition, located on the south side of East 46th Street between Grand and Tremont Avenues. The rezoning is from C2 General Commercial District to R6M Planned Unit Development to construct attached townhouses on individual lots. 10 units are proposed. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution for case number P18-02, Preliminary Platte Sang Meadows on 20.9 acres, more or less, located west of Northwest Boulevard and north of 46th Street, containing 58 residential lots and one outlot. Property is zoned R3, moderate-density dwelling district. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this? Anyone from the council? Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to quickly say, you know, for people who don't know, Mr. Singh was a city council person here for a while, and then a wonderful state senator representing this area, and now, some of that property is going to carry his name, so it's a great legacy. And if you haven't seen the designs yet, they're really nice and really squared away, so it'll be a nice place for people to live and to remember Senator Singh, so.
Seeing no one else from council, I do have a comment on this development, and I want to make sure that I frame this as a, this is a good infill development within the city. I do have concerns, and I think that if you read through the packet, Zach, the case that Zach Peterson lays out for this to be one continuous loop that loops through instead of three cul-de-sacs, I think is a compelling argument. It's one that I agree with, and I think when we do development, we need to try to avoid cul-de-sacs. They're problematic for our public safety departments, they're problematic for our public works departments. They also are separating what could be a really nice little neighborhood into three smaller, compact neighborhoods, where if this were one loop, you would have a lot more people connected together in community. So, I would encourage this to stay on discussion, and for my colleagues to look at the argument that Zach's made, and he actually says, "By making it a loop, there will be 60 lots yielded rather than 58." And I think this is something that when we approve developments, we need to look at developments as what's good for the city long-term, noting that this is going to be a great development, but it can be, in my opinion, it can be a little bit better. And I would also point my colleagues to the development that's happened in the last two years on Jersey Ridge behind the church. It's almost an exact replica of the development, and they'll be doing a loop. Those houses have sold very quickly, I think. So, that's my comment. Seeing no others, I would ask that that remain on discussion, and we'll move on to item number three. Item number three is a resolution reapproving the proposed annexation of 16.84 acres, more or less, of property located west of North Division Street and south of Sloper Town Road. And I just remembered, before we get into this, I was going to have Bruce Berger come up. Items three through 11 are in regards to the GDRC land, the Eastern Iowa Industrial Complex. We've had a lot of movement in the last couple of years, and that means there's a lot of zoning things, administrative things that we need to take care of.
Excuse me if I may, Mr. Chair, if you would make sure you understand, let everybody understand what GDRC means as well and so forth.
Sure. Bruce Berger, you're Community Planning and Economic Development Director. So, yeah, I know you haven't read all three of them yet, but items three, four, and five are all related to annexation, and so they're, and I think at least two, if not all three, you've actually approved before, but because of some timing delays, both with the notices going out and some other things, that we just are reapproving those. So, that's what those are about, and you'll notice that all of them are basically us getting closer to annexing everything up to Sloper Town Road, and in return, we're also moving forward with Eldridge at the same time as annexing down to Sloper Town from the north. So, that's helping tie together something that's been out in the works for a while. The other items, six through 11, that I know you haven't read yet, but those are really related in the same vicinity, same in the industrial park area, but there's a land swap that's going on, so we, the city, would like to have some additional land that is currently owned by John Dear that is south of the Transload Facility, and we need roughly an acre to be able to extend the rail further south of Transload, and that will allow better transition for Sterilite as they bring train cars in. So, it's just the nature of the user, and they're a big user, and in return, what we're doing is we're swapping some land that GDRC currently owns, which is the Greater Davenport Redevelopment Corporation. So, they are basically the administrators of the industrial, Eastern Iowa Industrial Center, and they are going to essentially convey land to the city. We will then, in turn, convey that to John Dear, and John Dear will, in turn, convey that one acre of land south of the Transload. So, it's like a three transaction deal going on there. And then, the final piece there, I believe, is related to three property owners north of Davenport, actually, north of Sloper Town, and they own land currently touching the current rail, and what we're doing there is the interchange tracks. So, you've heard us mention that before, but the interchange tracks will allow trains to basically pull off so that they can be offloaded into the Transload Facility. offloaded into the Transload facility. This includes Sterilite, but also any other users. So it will allow for some potential growth without blocking Sloper Town Road. So if we didn't do all of these pieces together, you'd see trains blocking Sloper Town for large periods of time. And so this is going to make that happen, and we really want to congratulate, thanks to the mayor and the three property owners out there. It was, without them agreeing to do this, that interchange track wouldn't work. So, I think that's all, whatever, seven of those action items or so.
Thank you, Bruce, for providing some clarity. So I have read item number three. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution reapproving the annexation of approximately 155 acres located west of Hillendale Road and south of Sloper Town Road. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution reapproving the proposed annexation of .24 acres, more or less, of city-owned railroad property located south of Sloper Town Road. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move on. Item number six is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute documents necessary to accept land from the petitioner, Greater Davenport Redevelopment Corporation of the following property: the south 102.02 feet of Lot 2 Interstate 80 Airport Industrial Park, 6th Edition, City of Davenport, County of State, State of Iowa. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute documents necessary to convey the following property to Deere &amp; Company: the south 102.02 feet of Lot 2 Interstate 80 Airport Industrial Park, 6th Edition, City of Davenport, County of Scott, State of Iowa. Anyone from the public wish to comment? Anyone from council? This item will move on. Item number eight: a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute documents necessary to acquire the following property and necessary temporary construction easement from Deere &amp; Company: the east 40 feet of Lot 1 of Interstate 80 Airport Industrial Park, 2nd Edition, City of Davenport, County of Scott, State of Iowa. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Anyone from the council? This item moves on. Item number nine is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute documents necessary to acquire .93 acres for right-of-way and 1.38 acres of temporary construction easement from RG'LLC. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Anyone from the council? This item moves on. Item number 10 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute documents necessary to acquire 1.22 acres for right-of-way and 1.22 acres of temporary construction easement from Glendale, Inc. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Anyone from the council? This item moves on. Item number 11 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute documents necessary to acquire .98 acres for right-of-way and 1.22 acres of temporary construction easement from Robert Settich, Lyta Settich, Richard Settich, Cynthia Settich, Patricia Luke, and John Luke. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Anyone from the council? This item moves on. And that concludes our Eastern Iowa Industrial Complex portion of the meeting, and we will move on to item number 12, which is a resolution authorizing the city administrator to sign a purchase agreement for the sale of city-owned land for the Tag Building Development Project in Ward 3. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? And this item will move on, and I will ask Alderman Clul to set the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that items number two and 12 be moved forward to discussion, and remaining items to be moved forward to the consent agenda.
There has been a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Mayor, that concludes community development. Back to you.
Thank you, Alderman Grip and Alderman Clul. Our secondary to be discussed is public safety. Alderman Rosson will lead that discussion, and Alderman Condon will set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll read these in three sections, and then ask for comment. Section number one's a resolution closing various streets, lanes, or public grounds on the listed dates to hold outdoor events. Davenport Public Schools Intermediate Track Meets, April 9th through 10th, 18th through 19th, the 23rd, 25th, 30th, May 3rd, 7th, 8th, and 17th. 3:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. Closure location is 32nd, 36th Street between Brady Street and Davenport Avenue. St. Paul, the Apostle Catholic Church and Knights of Columbus, Blue Mass, May 14th, 2018, 4 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Closure location is East Rush Home Street from Cary to Arlington Avenue. Riverance Festival of Fine Art, Riverance Festival of Fine Art, September 14th through 16th, 2018, 8 a.m. to 7 p.m., all days. Closure locations, 11th Street between Jersey Ridge and Hillcrest Avenue. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on one of those three, one or more of those three items? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, those three items will move on. Second section is motion approving noise variance requests for various events on the listed dates and times. Two items. Item number one, Josh Rangel at 2123 Warren Street, Sister's 40th Birthday Party. That's what I like to see on the agenda. Some birthday parties. Right on. Sister's 40th Birthday Party, everyone knows how old she is now. 3 p.m. to 11 p.m. Outdoor music over 50 dba. Good for her. Second item is Azteca Mexican Restaurant, 4811 North Brady Street, Suites 3 through 5, Cinco de Mayo Celebration, 11:30 a.m. to 10 p.m. Outdoor music over 50 dba. Anyone from the public would like to comment on one or both of those items? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, those two items will move on. The third section, motion approving beer and liquor license, new licenses. RME Courtyard, 121 West Second Street, outdoor area, six-month license from May 1st, 2018 to October 31st, 18. License type C. Rookie Sports Bar, 2818 Brady Street, outdoor area, April 28th through 29th, for customer appreciation event, license type C. Anyone would like to comment on either one of those? From the public? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, those two will move on. Section B is requests for exemption for 19 and 20-year-olds on premises. River Music Experience, the Redstone Room, 129 Main Street, 2nd floor, renewal, license type C. River Music Experience, 121 West Second Street, outdoor area, license type C. Anyone from the public would like to comment on either one of those items? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, those two items will move on. That concludes this section of the agenda, and I'd ask Alderman Condon to set the agenda.
I move to put all items on the consent agenda.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Very good. We're done, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Rosson and Alderman Condon. Our third area to be discussed tonight is public works. And in Alderman Ambrose's absence, Alderman Dunn will lead the discussion, and we'll set the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the Public Works Committee meeting for April 4. Open the Public Works Committee meeting for April 4, 2018. We've got seven items on the agenda this evening. Item number one is a resolution approving a contract for the FY19, FY20 Manhole Repair and Rehabilitation Program, design and preparation of bid documents to Strand and Associates in the amount not to exceed $56,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution approving a contract for the sanitary sewer condition assessment within Canadian Pacific and Iowa Interstate Railroad right-of-way to Ventra and Kim in the amount not to exceed $180,561.20. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move forward. Item number three is a resolution awarding, ordering in sidewalks related to the 2019 sidewalk construction program. Before I open this up, do we have someone from staff that can address it?
Good evening, Nicole Gleason, Public Works Director. This is the annual program whereby we take requests and/or note from citizens that sidewalks are missing, areas that are being used. And our sidewalk inspector, Eric Schnaber, goes out and addresses the situation, and then sends a letter requesting that the property owners do put the sidewalks in. So this is just setting up that program for the funds that have been allocated in that CIP for the upcoming year.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Please step forward, state your name and ward, please.
Hello. My name is Tom Shai. I'm one of the members of the Ryan Court Owners Association. We have tax parcel N1708-03A. That's the, it's a parcel on the west side of Elmore Avenue between Active Endeavors to the south and Senior Star to the north. It's about a 6.8-acre parcel. It's undeveloped. Our Owners Association, we live on the other side of Pheasant Creek, so west of this parcel. There's three of us that are the owners of this parcel, and it's used as a buffer between Elmore Avenue and all the traffic there to our homes there. There's a ravine, trees, creek, and then more trees than our houses. So it's an undeveloped parcel. There's almost no traffic, pedestrian traffic on Elmore. Lot of car traffic, but really no pedestrian traffic. This parcel, if you drive by, if you look at it, there's not even a track or a pathway from people walking on it, walking on the grass there, because it's just not used very much. The city sent us a letter, asked us to put a sidewalk in there. The cost estimate that they gave us was $30,000 for installation. And then, it's not just that, it's the maintenance of it with the snow removal, because we can't just go out our front door or out our back door and remove snow. We have to go way around to even get to this parcel. We have to go on, we're on Ryan Court, we have to go on Ryan Court, East 43rd Street, north on Forest Road, then on 46, then down on Elmore, and then there's no place for us to park, public parking. We have to go to park at Active Endeavors, I guess, to unload a snow blower to snow blow this parcel. So, it's a fairly significant initial cost. It's a lot of hassle and cost for us to maintain it. And we see that there's very little benefit because there's so low traffic pedestrian-wise on that stretch. And if they really want to walk on that stretch, there's a sidewalk on the other side of the street by the, by the, all the developments over on the other side of the street. So, we respectfully request that you deny the sidewalks, and let us leave that undeveloped, parcel undeveloped with no sidewalk on there. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Counsel? Alderman Clul.
Yes, I wonder if Director Gleason could talk to that issue. Is there, is there a place for exception to this, or exactly how would you respond to Mr. Shai's comments?
So, as I said, these are all requests based from other citizens. So without actually knowing a count of how many people are using it, I did look at the map, agree. It's a challenging situation for them. The sidewalk does go all the way past Active Endeavors and Senior Star, though, so there's a definite gap. And unfortunately, there's not really a convenient place to cross with a light unless you go back to the Lowe's area. So, this is really, I guess, up to council at this point. This is just our traditional program that, whereby we get requests, we then look at them, and if it seems like a warranted request, we then send the letter. So, but we don't actually have a count of who's using it. We just have, I can check with our sidewalk inspector and see how many requests he's received for this particular area.
Just wondering if there's an issue of fidelity. If you start to make exceptions, does this become problematic?
It does. You know, what'll happen a lot of times is, you know, if we wait now, it may come back up next year and the year after, and you may be seeing the same request over and over again as we move through the program, depending on how long you'd ask us to push the pause button. So, it just might become a cycle. But it's hard to say. It's going to be a case-by-case basis.
Thank you. Alderman McGinnis.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I had one question for you. So, is the condition right now that there are, there's a sidewalk to the north, the Elmore Places condominiums, and a sidewalk to the south?
Correct.
Okay, so this is the only section without a sidewalk?
Correct.
Along here. Okay.
Yes.
Alderman Tompkins.
I'm just going to take a snack. Thank you. My question is, and I'm wondering maybe, Mr. Berger, well, I'm not sure, sorry. Looking forward to the trails and for, just trying to, for connectivity. So, maybe Nicole, I don't know. Kind of the overall plan as we're moving forward, trying to connect for, obviously for bikes and for pedestrian traffic. I know we have an overall plan. We recently talked about that and presented that. So, I know that's our goal. So I'm assuming this is trying to connect that and make it easier across the city.
This one is a traditional width sidewalk, so at this point it would not accommodate bicycles. But I guess, I'm not sure without looking back at the RDG plan, if this one is a long-term plan for cycles or not.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor. I'm sorry. Alderman Mattson.
Not yet. So, I'm joking.
They say those mayor pro temps, it's one heartbeat away, pal. So I'm sensitive.
The last ones have laughed. So, anyway, that was a joke. Thought process, so. And I apologize for asking this because I didn't do, I didn't remember what I saw. Is there a plan to put a sidewalk on Marquette between 35th and Kimberly on the east side? Does that ring a bell? If you can't answer it right now, I know I asked a while ago. If someone can answer it, then so be it.
Clay said he'll check and email you tomorrow.
That's fine. Yeah. And I will, I know I asked for it before, but I'll continue it. Now I'll ask for it publicly if it isn't. Because that's where Mid-City is, and on that side is where they walk, and it's a mess. So, a lot of kids walk there. So if it isn't, I'd ask for it to continue to get on that list and put there. So I appreciate the answer. Thank you.
Is this, if I may ask, Mr. Chair, is that, this is just an addition to what we were just talking about, is what you're saying? Is that right?
Well, correct. I just want, if it's on there. So, if it's not, I'll ask, continue to get it on there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess this is probably for Nicole also. And sorry. Sorry. You know, this is, it's a really unique property and I think request. I mean, that buffer is huge. It's separated by a creek, and then their backyard is essentially a butt's this major arterial type of road. So, I definitely understand the residents' concerns about this. When we talk sidewalks, do we differentiate at all between a sidewalk that's on one of those major streets or neighborhood sidewalks, or we consider them all to be the same thing?
We're pretty much considering them all to be the same once they're developed. The unique thing about this one is that that parcel otherwise is likely undevelopable, but it's just because it's adjacent to two very developed properties is kind of what makes it a little bit more unique. Yep.
Yeah. And I would imagine some of the requests are coming from maybe that Senior Star Center. I know that a lot of those residents had put in some complaints last year about property to their, to the west of them, because they do traverse those sidewalks quite a bit.
Yep. And I can get more details on where the requests came from for next week if you'd like.
And then, are there any cities that you know of that do differentiate between sidewalk types?
I don't know.
Okay. Maybe I'll do some research into that, and maybe you can look into it as
And we can ask Eric, our sidewalk inspector.
Yeah. I'm just curious. So, thank you.
So as a follow-up to that, Tom and I have actually been talking about this quite a bit today. When we're talking about the major arterials, we're seeing this a little bit on eastern. I think we saw it kind of north, and we happen to own some of that property. But when we have these major arterials that are really regional transportation sidewalks, they are different than neighborhood streets. So I think we would recommend putting that on an upcoming council discussion topic where we start to talk about on an upcoming council discussion topic where we start to talk about what the policy is when we have neighborhood streets versus what we would consider regional walkways.
Thank you for asking, letting me speak again. I had one other question. So, and this may be, this may be for Mr. Shy. I apologize. So who maintains this? It's owned by the neighborhood, the, the association. So who does the mowing and does the care of this lot right now?
Right now, it's one of our owners, Joe Harper back here. He, he drives his riding lawnmower all the way around to get to this parcel to, to mow it and to pick up the garbage that people throw out their windows as they drive by. So, but we can at least drive, he can drive over there. I mean, with the snow blower, it just makes it so much more difficult. We have to get some permission from Active Endeavors or whomever to, to be able to park there and unload. Okay?
Alderman Dickman?
If we are considering having a discussion about circumstances like this, would it be advisable to, to pause on it a little? Or is this, is this, if we approve this, is that approving the specifics or the concept?
I think the, the sticking point on these is the snow removal. And so ordering it in now to be done, I think would be fine. And it's a policy discussion for, for the council to determine, you know, how do we deal with these kind of regional areas? You have them along BMP too, Veterans Memorial Parkway, where how are we going to do the snow removal? Do we continue to put it on residential owners who are far removed from it, who can't really get to it easy? Is there some fee involved? How, how do we do it?
Okay. So we're...
So I think just ordering it in now would be fine, because it's really a question about how you do snow removal.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
So ordering that in now, would that then be something that could, after the council does study this issue in terms of main arterials versus neighborhood sidewalks, is that something that could be retroactively changed?
Yeah, because what you would be discussing is the, the prospective policy of how, how next winter or the winter after that, we deal with these situations. And it appears like there are more and more subdivisions where we have this issue where the back of the lot has a sidewalk and it's very far removed, or it's quite a ways around to get that 40 or 50 or 60 feet of sidewalk that you have to take care of. So it's just a, a discussion that you all may want to have. It's a unique situation in the older parts of town. Usually if you're on Brady or one of these locusts, you have a, basically a normal-sized sidewalk that's either on the side of your house or just out in front of your house. And you don't have to take a secure this route to, through the snow to get there.
Yes, I'm sorry. I just want clarification, because we seem to be jumping around on this topic. So from our previous conversations, we have, I believe, all agreed that we need to connect all of our sidewalks in neighborhoods. So it's really not a question about whether or not a sidewalk needs to go in. It does. What you're talking about is us having a conversation about options for snow removal. So that would be either charging a fee to the association if we're doing it, because we can't do it for free, because then we need to do it for free for everybody, or reclaiming some of the land, correct? Taking some of the land back and then becoming our responsibility. Okay. Just making sure I was clear on that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, this item will move on. Item number four is resolution approving the contract for the East Locust Street Improvement Project from Langman Construction Incorporated in the amount of $1,490,787.43, and authorizing Mayor Frank Clips to sign and manage any related agreements. Anyone from the public wishing to this, to comment on this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move forward. Item number five is resolution approving the contract for the purchase and installation of an automated voice enunciator system for the transit bus fleet to ETA systems of Boca Raton, Florida in the amount of $115,000. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is resolution approving the con, a contract amendment to Duck Creek South Interceptor Rehabilitation Project with S&amp;K Construction LLC in the amount of $200,000. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. And finally, item number seven, resolution approving the contract for the Main Street Sewer Improvement Project from Hagerty Earthworks LLC in the amount of $629,617.25, and authorizing Mayor Frank Clips to sign and manage any related agreements. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Alderman Tompkins, would you set the agenda, please?
Sure. Thank you. I make a motion to move item number three to discussion and all other items to consent.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That concludes Public Works, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn, and thank you, Alderman Tompkins, for your dual roles there. I appreciate that. Our last area to be discussed is finance. And in advance, I want to thank you for the expeditious report you're going to give us. So that's very good.
Well, thank you. We have no items, so I don't think I've ever had that happen in four and a half years of sitting in council. So that's pretty exciting. I did just want to share that we do have a list of purchases between $10,000 and $50,000. Those are simply for informational purposes only, and I will turn it back to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, as we reported before, all the items that we listed on the discussion agenda will be discussed again next week. All the other items will be approved as part of the consent agenda as we move it on. It'll go on two more cycles depending upon the items that are on the agenda. Are there any other ordinances, resolutions, and motions this evening? Seeing none, are there any public with business this, tonight? Seeing none, are there any reports of city officials? Is there a motion to adjourn?
A second.
It's been moved in second. All in fever, say aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Meeting adjourned.